Okay, and good morning and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting on February 2nd of 2022. And yes, council is back in chambers very cautiously and hopefully everything turns out for the better as we open up with our challenges with COVID and Omicron and everything else we've had to do. I still suggest that we all be cautious and hopefully we'll get over this hill. Confirmation of agenda, is anything additions, deletions today, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
CEO. Okay, so today's meeting mainly is a council discussion on the Parks Recreation Master Plan and also a discussion on the Marina and Marina lease. Is any disclosure or pecuniary interest in general nature thereof today? Seeing none, and before we go any further, Council Wells is with us. He's coming in virtually because he felt that was the right thing to do today considering he had gone to his bout of illness. The option of minutes, please, for December 6th, 2021 Committee of the Whole.
Sure. Moved by Councilor Mellon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Gardner, that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole held on December 6th, 2021 of the Seventh Council of the Municipality of South Dundas be adopted as circulated.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all heard in motion, those in favor, opposed if any, motion carries. So today, we have our delegation from our consultant concerning the Parks Recreation Master Plan. I'll turn it over to CEO for introductions, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this morning is, we have our consultant that's going to be doing our Recreation Master Plan. They want to, an opportunity to discuss with council, their ideas, their thoughts, and put that all together as part of the final plan that will be coming back to council in June. I believe Austin is on as well too, so maybe Austin can provide a little bit of intro as well to the master plan.
Okay, welcome, Austin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Shannon. Staff would just like to thank council for meeting this morning to discuss the Parks Recreation Master Plan. And Todd and Dennis from Montez Brown Planning Consultants will be going over what the plan is so far and how our public consultation processes went. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Todd and Dennis.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with council, mayor members of council this morning, and staff that are with us. We have a presentation overview, but before we get going, I'm Todd Brown with Montez Brown Planning Consultants, and joining me is Dennis Quann, a senior planner with our firm. So if I can share my screen, I will do so. So this is a fairly brief presentation, but we wanted to give you an overview of where we are in the process. We're really in the early stages, so collecting background research, looking at your demographics and trends, and undertaking community consultation so that then we can start to develop the assessment of needs, recommendations, and bring that back as a draft master plan to you for your input and then finalization. In terms of today's purpose, it's really to present to you or introduce you to the Parks Recreation Master Plan project and to seek your input as members of council so that we can consider your thoughts and opinions and priorities as we develop the master plan itself. In terms of our, I guess, background on the consulting team, Montez Brown Planning Consultants is the lead firm. We have been a leader in parks, recreation, culture, and land use planning for decades. We were established in 1977, and over the past 40 years, we've undertaken leisure planning studies for over 40 communities in the last five years. I should say, over the course of the company's history, we've completed almost 400 recreation and parks projects. As part of our team, we brought on Tucker Reed and Associates. Claire Tucker Reed specializes in strategic operational planning, municipal parks, programming, and service delivery, as well as organizational effectiveness and policy development with a strong focus on parks, recreation, sports, and culture. So she sort of brings the service delivery side of the equation to the project. Overall, the purpose of a master plan is to guide decision-making over the next 10 years. It is a guiding document for council. It will help you understand what the community is saying in terms of what their needs and priorities are, but knowing that it's been vetted through ourselves to make sure that we're not bringing back to you a wish list, that it is true needs and true priorities, and that it's brought back in a fiscally responsible manner. We're looking at indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, programs, activities, and events, parks, open space, waterfront areas, and trails, as well as service delivery policies and practices. So in terms of the process itself, as I mentioned, we really are just getting going. So in December, we held our initial meeting, and we've been collecting a lot of background research. And we'd like to really thank Austin for assisting in facilitating the transition of information to us. There's been a lot of requests, and he's been managing with his staff to get that information to us. We've also been undertaking an extensive consultation process, which I'll get into in a moment. Once that sort of first phase is completed, we'll be undertaking the needs assessments and drafting the master plan. That will be sort of in the March to May timeframe. And then as we approach June, we'll be looking to finalize the document and bring that to council for your consideration and hopeful approval. As with any master plan, our hope is that staff, as well as council, will embrace the plan as your plan, and that it will sort of transition from the consultant's plan to one that you feel strongly represents your community and that you strongly back and will implement. In terms of the community consultation, which we're currently undertaking, this is a very key element of the plan. So, public awareness and promotion were one of the initial stages in this process, and we wanted to make sure that we're recognizing that there is a digital divide. And so we wanted to make sure that people from across your community were aware of the project. And so, from a sort of an online presence, we created a website on the municipal webs, on your municipality's website with display boards promoting the community survey and email address for provision of additional comments or thoughts. We also worked with your staff to make sure that there were posters put up all across the municipality. There were newspaper advertisements about the project, and there were also essentially postcard posters that were prepared that were sent out to each household. So it was a good cross-section of people that were aware of the project. The public information session is really something that we held over a period of time. So this was the online presence of having the display boards on your website to make sure that the community was aware of the project, that they had an opportunity to provide input, whether through the online survey or through email. It was their choice. We promoted the community survey. Again, the community survey was primarily online and promoted as such, although we did make copies available through municipal staff to make sure that anyone who wanted to survey and didn't have access through the internet or preferred to fill it out in paper form, that they were able to do so. So far, the survey has been extremely successful. We have somewhere between 500 and 550 surveys completed, which is an excellent return. We are currently talking to staff about whether this Friday, which is the anticipated cutoff time for the survey, will be the end, or whether we should make any small adjustment to the timing. But as a consulting firm, we're very pleased with the results that we're seeing through that community survey. We've also held, just last week, a number of community stakeholder sessions, four in total. We talked to a variety of groups at each one of those sessions, representing different interests, whether they were youth, older adults, sports organizations, indoor and outdoor, parks users, trail users. So a wide cross-section of your community also would represent a good number of your residents as well, who are part of those organizations. We also asked those organizations to promote the survey as well. We held staff workshops with both frontline staff and managerial staff and gained some excellent insight into where you have been and where opportunity exists moving forward. And then, of course, today, with the Committee of the Whole, with a brief overview of the project, and then hopefully an opportunity to engage you in some of your thoughts and opinions as we move forward. Once the draft master plan is completed, we'll again come out to the public and do another public information session, finalize that document, and present that to council. We are regularly meeting with steering committee throughout this process to make sure that we are on track, that we have good oversight and review of material and approval of the various materials to go out to the community. So today, what we're hoping that the committee will help with is to look at the project's scope in terms of both indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, parks and open space, trails, waterfront areas, programs, services, and specialty events, as well as the program, service, delivery, policies, and so forth. Some of the questions that might prompt discussion include what members of council think should be improved upon, or what you see as the greatest challenges facing South Dundas over the coming years. Over the short term, say the next two to three years, what you see as main priorities for park recreation in your community, and any additional thoughts, ideas, or priorities that you think we should know about. Lastly, just in terms of next steps, our goal is to prepare a Phase One document, which really pulls together all the background research and all the consultation to provide a sense of where we are today and where we think we are headed over the next couple of years, based on the community consultation. We'll meet with the project steering committee to review that document and then start developing the master plan itself. And with that, I'll, I know that this presentation was part of your agenda, so in order to be able to see everyone, perhaps I'll unshare my screen, but if you'd like me to reshare it, I can certainly do so. With that, Mayor, we'd be pleased to answer any questions or to obtain input from members of council.
Okay, thanks, Todd. The different mayor had to step out for a minute, so we will continue on. Council Wells, are you prepared to ask, make any comments, ask questions? Your floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Todd, for your presentation. You know, we really have a lot, like your, what I've seen of this year, you're covering basically everything. A couple thoughts. Is there any thing in the master plan for like, like not just in there, but out in the rural and that for activities and stuff that people don't have to drive to do activity, or like, are we gonna like overlook the whole municipality? Are we just gonna concentrate on the waterfronts, or like I see trails and stuff like that, but there's, what's your thought on like people out in the rural area? I know we have to drive to get the stuff, but there could be things out like in our smaller hamlets and towns and stuff.
Absolutely. So this is a municipal-wide master plan, so it's important that both rural and more urban or settlement area residents are part of this process and that the master plan speaks to their needs. So we will be looking at all parts of your community, all residents' needs, abilities, affordability, all of those sorts of elements. So we are looking at opportunities within your existing park system. Some of your smaller settlement areas have parks that may be underutilized. We're still early in the process to be able to comment fully on that, but we want to make sure that there's opportunities throughout your community, recognizing that people in the more rural areas may have a little bit further to travel to get to some of those opportunities, but certainly they should exist, whether there's trails, playground equipment, or other opportunities. And that's something that certainly we'll be looking at. And the community survey is certainly going to help us with that because we do have the ability through the community survey to understand where the survey results came from in general. And so we'll have a sense of, you know, are we hearing from people who are largely from an urbanized area of your municipality or a more rural area and understand the needs there? So absolutely.
Thank you for that, Todd. Another thing, in the master plan, and we've talked about this in our term, about developing the waterfront, whether it's Yeracan or Morseburg, to whether the municipality does it, like, say, restaurant along the waterfront, maybe add a marina like Prescott, Ontario. Is there any plans like to incorporate something like that, whether it's another developer that comes in to develop it, or the municipality takes the fund themselves to develop the waterfront as far as planning something like that, like, say, like marinas in Morseburg and restaurant and the whole kit and combo?
Yeah, so you know, based on the consultation that we've heard so far, that the waterfront is very important for a variety of reasons, whether it's the access to swimming, to, you know, getting a canoe or a kayak out onto the water or fishing, but also just being able to be near the waterfront for community events, or just hanging around with your family. So it is important. We did last week, as part of our stakeholder sessions, we had both waterfront committees representatives on those sessions, so we did get direct input from them and their thoughts. And we did ask them that if there was additional input, that we'd be happy to hear from that, from them. So we are looking at the waterfront in terms of a variety of uses and opportunities, and certainly the household survey will help to define what your community residents are saying as well, to give us a better picture. We recognize that the municipality can't do everything, so, you know, there may be recommendations that are partnership-oriented or private sector-focused, where council would seek to find either a partner or a third-party developer to assist with things. So we don't have the answers at the moment, but certainly we are looking at that, and it is not a forgotten part.
Okay, thank you, Todd. I, Mayor, as now, I, just a few questions. I might have some after it goes around the table. Thank you.
Okay, Council Lewis?
Todd, when we, when we do the master plan, I know there's a lot of youth and a lot of adults in South Dundas, but are we taking into consideration seniors? Because South Dundas is known for the great number of senior citizens that we have.
Absolutely. We think every age group is important, and that every age group should be engaged in recreation to keep them healthy and active. And, you know, it also contributes to their social and mental health as well. So we think all age groups should be active. So we'll be looking at certainly, often we refer to it as older adult, and we've moved a little bit away from the term seniors, but we recognize what you're saying. And certainly there's different abilities and interests within that age category. But we are certainly looking at, you know, what the older population is looking to participate in. We know there's a variety of activities that we've seen in other communities, and, you know, some of them are more traditional, card playing, carpet bowling, and things of that nature, and others are more opportunity to get out on your trail system, play pickleball, which is a fast-growing sport in Canada, and a variety of more active type of opportunities where the ability is there. So certainly, we do want to make sure that this plan speaks to the needs of all residents, including your older population.
Thank you, because I have reached that age where I'm now a senior, and there's a lot of things that I can't do anymore. That was the only question that I had, and I had, you know, I had a great concern in that, that whenever we do our master plan, that anybody over the age of 60 is included in that plan. And I thank you very much.
Absolutely. We want to make sure that everybody is taken into account. And, you know, I, my, as a side note, my father is 81, and he still plays hockey. So, you know, there are those that have abilities that can participate in active recreation, but we also recognize those that cannot, but still need to participate in some form in order to have that social interaction. And there are activities like chair yoga, where you can come in, sit in a chair, and participate in a yoga program, where you're not necessarily having to put a lot of weight on your joints, but still be able to remain active. So we're looking at all those sorts of things, and certainly we'll be working with Austin and his team with regard to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Allison Allen?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Biden. Yeah, you know, we've got to start it now. I guess Council Lewis and Council Wells sort of touched on a couple points I had jotted down. You had mentioned the stakeholders, four stakeholder, I guess you've reached out to, focus groups? Have they, did you include, I guess going back on Council Wells's comment, like the stakeholder groups, like recreation, like Matilda Recreation, the Princeton Recreation Group, or the Williamsburg Recreation Group, were they included in that four, the four groups that you reached out to?
I'm trying to, I don't have the list in front of me. I know Matilda was part of the session. They were excited as part of that discussion. Austin, I don't know if you have that answer?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, all the community recreation groups were part of the stakeholder meetings. Obviously, there's multiple groups that participate in various events. I know Williamsburg Recreation participates in the hockey, as well as outdoor recreation with baseball, so they were part of the outdoor rec group. As far as Riverside, they were part of the community groups with the Lions Club. So all those community recreation groups were represented at the stakeholder meetings.
Okay, thank you. That's, I think it's important to make sure, like Council Wells sort of indicated, you know, reach out to everybody within, in the municipality. I guess the other thing I had down here is you mentioned you had between 500 and 550 had responded to the survey. What would you, I guess, in your expertise, think is a, is an acceptable or a good number to base, you know, a rec plant on? As far as, I guess, if you took, say, if you take 500, that's, you know, that's about 5% of our population, roughly. Is that a, is that a realistic number, or should it be higher, or, you know, can, is that a good number to have, or are we looking for a bigger number as far as, you know, I say 5% of the population, you know? So we have an accurate, an accurate number to be able to base this plan on?
Right. So I'm gonna back up for just one second, because I did want to add something on the stakeholder engagement. We also followed up with every organization, including those that were unable to participate, and sent them out all of the questions that we had asked during the stakeholder session, so that they could give input into the process. So those that even couldn't participate are still welcome to do so, and that is out there. In terms of the survey, you know, we were hoping for somewhere between 400 and 450 surveys, so we exceeded that. I think what's important for council to sort of recognize is that even though, you know, 500 to 550 surveys may not represent a large percentage of your overall population, those are surveys that represent households. So when we, when we take into account that those, you know, let's say, two and a half to three persons per household, you know, we're getting a little bit higher percentage. So it's, we never expect to hear from every household in a community, but certainly you're on the higher end of what we, we would normally anticipate to see as a result of the survey itself. So we think we have a good return. It's also important to recognize that, you know, the survey is one tool that we use in terms of understanding your community's needs. It's an important one, but the stakeholder sessions, the staff sessions, session with yourself today, as well as all the background research, benchmarking, demographics, all those other elements are just as important to us when we start our evaluations. So we think we're good. At the same time, we have asked Austin if he feels that we should extend the survey for an extra few days, and we're just sort of reviewing that at the moment. Currently, it's set to close at the end of the day on Friday evening. We're hoping certainly today, by talking about it with you, that we'll get the word out there to the public as well. So, you know, every avenue has been, has been tried to get as many people as possible to fill out the survey.
Yeah, oh, thank you, because, yeah, it is frustrating, because, you know, you want people, and, you know, and after the, you know, you know, the survey is done, and then you come out with the final plan, and people say, oh, you know, that wasn't, you know, but if you can get people to take the survey and, you know, encourage them, you know, if they're watching here today, or, you know, to take the survey, to, you know, make sure you get your input into that. Just, I guess, maybe my final question, if you will, Mayor, is when you're, when you come back with your final council presentation, we'll be, you know, and where we are, will we have any type of dollar figure attached to this so that we, you know, council would have an idea, okay, you know, this is gonna, you know, whatever your recommendation is, you know, the one that keeps popping into your, my head, you know, is a multi-use recreational facility, you know, everybody will, you know, I don't know, you know, the former ones touched on that, and then, you know, you look at the dollar figure and what we can afford, or, you know, what is realistic. So will you have any type of, I guess even, you know, obviously, it's not going to be a Class A estimate, but even a ballpark number? You know, so council has an idea, and the people out there realize, you know, if you're gonna go look at, you know, we need a $50 million multi-use recreational facility, well, you know, that, you know, prices us out of the ballgame right away. So that we have an idea, and the people have an idea, you know, what this is gonna cost, and what it would cost on a yearly basis, what we would have to put in, because that'll, you know, the most daunting figure will be the dollar figure, you know? We would love to do, in a perfect world, you know, everything that everybody would like, but dollar and cents, you know, are gonna be our biggest limiting factor. So, yeah.
Right. Well, you know, that's really why you do a master plan, is so that you understand your true needs and your true priorities, and that we can provide a, you know, essentially, you know, for lack of a better term, Class D, so a high-level cost estimate. We'll be working with your staff to make sure that they're costs that are consistent with what you've seen. So if it's a playground, you know, what has been your past practice for replacing a playground or building a new one? And, you know, we'd be looking at all things like that, that you do have a good sense. We do not anticipate bringing back a recommendation that is beyond the scope of your affordability. That would make no sense for a master plan. There may be some aspirational recommendations that sort of look to the future, and maybe it's beyond the 10-year timeframe of the plan, that, but, you know, part of the goal is to identify opportunities, not only for the municipality, but also where stakeholders are looking for a project, and they may be able to grab onto it and say, you know, we can help fundraise for this, or to make you grant-ready, so that if there are projects that a grant is out there, whether it's from federal, provincial government or others, that you are grant-ready to be able to justify why you need that grant, because the document is there. So yes, we will provide the capital estimates, and, but that does position you well moving forward in implementing the plan.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, maybe I'm, you know, getting ahead of myself. That might be an exercise for staff to come back with a report, you know, tell us, you know, and I realize that, you know, it's pretty hard for you to be able to give us any type of dollar figure, but I think that's, that'll have to be, to me, be the next step after, you know, you know, final council presentation. So, you know, future councils will have a game plan in place, you know, sort of like our waterfronts now, so much a year, or what we have to put aside for bridges or roads or whatever, you know, any infrastructure needs. So, yeah. So, yeah, I think that's all I have for right now, Mayor Byvilles. Thank you. It was a good report.
Yeah, and I and I should say that, you know, what you've just said is is exactly how we would see the the process unfolding is that as much as the master plan will identify projects and and general costs, staff would then integrate that into the the long-term capital budget and work with council in in approving those on an annual basis. So it is a process that is not sort of a one-time. It gives you an opportunity to revisit and make adjustments moving forward. So, you know, there there is sort of that capital and essentially and ultimately your operating budget as well that would have to be taken into account and and so staff would take the document and build upon it in coming years.
As Todd knows, I I've had an opportunity to participate on on the steering committee and I did emphasize when we we started the process that all South Dundas was included as best as we could do, including the recreation committees and groups that were beyond the Morrisburg, Air Qua sphere or semicircle. So, you know, those those thoughts were certainly noted when we started and the survey is probably the best tool we had as much as, and we did get, you know, cards out, we we communicated, we we requested them to do all that and so far, so good. It's it's a challenge in in this day and age and Omicron and the and the lockdown in the last little while put us back indoors and not as as free as we'd like to. It would have been nice to have opened up Matilda Hall or Air Qua Civic Center or even here to to have people in and and kind of dream a bit. Anyway, I do believe they've done the best they can. I'll trust your judgment on the survey number. My my magic number was 1,000 and I think I was probably dreaming, but that's okay. You know, you talked about your wish list and I I do hope that some of the wish list items, they don't need to be totally considered, but I think council needs to hear them, like as much as we've always talked about a multi-use recreational facility and and for for dollar-wise, you you look at the Benson Center in Cornwall with, you know, with two or three ice pads and a soccer facility all indoors under one roof and meeting rooms and everything else. That was $32 million 10 years ago, so you can pretty well double that and you wouldn't want that probably in South Dundas. But I think, you know, you always have to have a wish list in in life because if you don't, then what are you working for? And, you know, I'll just, you know, the example we had on the farm this year was I always wanted to have a heated shop and and on the farm and probably should have done it 10 years ago, but it's sitting there now. It's not quite heated yet, but it will be by the time I need it. But, you know, we got, you have to have some dreams, but you also have to live live in the reality of the situation you are in now and and I certainly hope that those who participated in the survey or those who participated in the focus groups said that what they really truly felt we needed to do in South Dundas. Council can do some guiding on a rec plan, but I think in the end, you know, there's only five of us and then there's, you know, a bunch of staff. I'm not going to put a number on that, how many participated, but but there's 10, there's 11,000 residents of South Dundas and I think there's some aspirations that we want to grow. We have a new, I wouldn't call a new type of resident South Dundas, but there are people that have moved from cities into our area and to other rural areas and and they're going to come with different ideas for recreation because they were exposed to a lot more than we have to offer right now. And I do hope that some of them do mention that they'd like to see certain different types of recreation activities in in South Dundas. You know, the questions you you bring up, like improve, like, I think we always have to, I think we've done quite a bit in the last 10 years. We have, you know, used the facility we have here and encouraged more recreational activities, more exercise activities. We certainly, the trail systems are really used now to their to the high benefit. We have worked on our waterfronts. We certainly have encouraged some of the other recreation groups to be active. I know the the one in Princeton, the Matilda Group have certainly sprung to life and that was a good thing. There was funding to do that and and they and they did that in Princeton. I think that's really opened up the eyes of others that things can be done if you really want to do them. So short term, I I don't know if we have any priorities. It's, it's, you know, I think we need to continue on what we're doing and if there's ideas generated by the recreation master plan and the surveys, I think we have to be open-minded to as many as we can. I know that Counsel Mellon brings up costs and and, you know, just to let you know, Todd, Counsel Mellon doesn't like Class D estimates. He thinks the ballpark is too big, so he likes the ballpark a little closer and he he doesn't understand the world that sometimes you have to have the big ballpark to work in the little ballpark. But anyway, that's okay. Dollars and cents do count in in the end. We're we're challenging challenged with a lot of of things we need to do in South Dundas. We have roads and bridges and then there's water wastewater services and and all our facilities that have to be kept up. We do work with an older arena and it has been fixed up several times and I think we're we're at the point where we're going to use it for at least the next 10 years. But, you know, 10 years from now, we may, we may hopefully have grown a bit. We have different residents here. Maybe we will relook at the at a multi-use facility. And where it's located, I'm not even going to dream of right now, but, you know, it's it's something that I think you have to have aspirations. We'll be seeing, we'll see if there's some that do come out of the survey. It'll be interesting, there are no doubt about it. I did participate in the survey myself and my wife, who actually uses uses some of the South Dundas exercise programs, participated at her own level. We didn't do it as a household, so we have no children at home and no children that live close. So, you know, if we had grandchildren here, we probably would have had a different attitude in in what we would have put in the survey. But when I did run in in 2018 and Recreation was brought up, I said, we needed to look at a new rec plan. It wasn't going to be my plan, it wasn't going to be council's plan, it was people's South Dundas plan. So in the end, that's what I hope happens. Be interesting to see the draft and and see what kind of ideas have come out. As I said, don't, sometimes those ideas that are aspirational, they shouldn't be put to the side totally, but put on the side that you always have that thought in your mind that if a day ever comes that a government or or we have the opportunity to find funding to do something big and grand, and it will take something to to bring, it'll be, you know, federal and provincial dollars that certainly help, but and that's what the Benson Center was, you know, they didn't pay for it all themselves. You look at North Grenville and Kempville, the same deal. They got, you know, they went from the arena that was probably suitable and curling, you know, all those facilities are suitable, but they wanted to upgrade and they took the opportunity and and have done a fine job of it. Now, they've grown exponentially and that's a different kind of situation, but a lot of those facilities were in place before the growth came. So sometimes you got to put something there to encourage growth and I hope whoever's sitting here in the next four years will at least look at things going forward with a a future scope and and not at a narrow, what do we need to do today scope and and forget about tomorrow because, as I said, if you don't look forward, you're looking I have nothing else to say. As I said, I don't want to, I I think we've steered the Todd and his group and make sure that all South Dundas is incorporated and and communicated as best we can. I think in the end, we'll see what happens and and hopefully among the 500. And if anybody's listening or if there's anybody out there, maybe we'll put some more stuff out there on social media to either get it done this week or if we feel we need to do an extra week, we'll see what we do. Usually the extra week is just a trickle effect, but I don't want to shut it down if there's still something coming in and and if something comes in the next week, then that that would be still something we could add to it. So my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and we thank you also for for your participation on the steering committee, which has been very helpful for us. And certainly what you've you've said in in terms of, you know, understanding what your community needs, but also having that aspirational element is important to to these kind of plans. And it is very important that it is community-driven, that it is a South Dundas master plan for your residents. So, you know, we work in a lot of different communities, a lot of different sizes and types of development. So, you know, our roots as a company came out of more of a small-town village township type of background. So we've, you know, have a lot of experience in communities like yours, but we also have experience in in larger urban settlement areas such as communities in the Greater Toronto Area. So all of that combined really helps to to give us a lot of information to pull from to make sure that the plan is is appropriate for your community, affordable and does meet the needs of your residents long-term. I would encourage members of council, so any members of council that, you know, after today's session, if if you would like to provide additional input, feel free to to go through Austin and we can set up a personal interview with you if you'd like. Otherwise, we will take the information that you provided today and and move forward. But certainly at any point in time along this master plan process, if there's things that you'd like us to know about, whether it's a specific park or facility that you think we should be considering or looking at improving, we'd we'd love to hear any of that kind of information as well. So we thank you for for your time today.
Okay. Counsel Wells, you have any further comments?
No, I, it was very good discussion. Just very good. So I'm looking forward to the draft too. I think it's going to be exciting. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So as Todd has mentioned, I, if there's any member of council that that would like to speak to Todd and his group on a one-to-one basis, that avenue is always open. I'm going to encourage Deputy Mayor to do so. I know she had to go out and hopefully I'm sure that she would have had brought more to the discussion, but anyway, I will make sure that, and she is part of the steering group too, so and and I will lose, use that term loosely, steering. It's more making sure that Todd and his group recognize what South Dundas thought about. I think, you know, they didn't have the opportunity to come here and listen to people personally, so I think we wanted to emphasize that it was as open and transparent as possible and in the end, it's a a plan that that will work for the municipality of South Dundas, not one that we as council will look at and 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 scratch our head and say, well, if that's what they wanted, we'd have no idea how it's going to happen or or something like that. I I do believe something will come out of this that will will work for for us and our residents. Any any parting words, Todd?
No, I I think you you hit the nail on the head right there. You know, it's a plan that it's it's an exciting plan as we move forward. I I think that, you know, one of the things just to keep in mind is we've been preparing these master plans during COVID, so over the last two years, and they've been very successful in terms of community engagement. So as much as we haven't been able to sort of attend in-person sessions, we found that we found alternative approaches to get as many, if not more, people to participate. So, you know, often you spend a lot of time gathering together display boards and and, you know, driving to a public open house to have three or four people show up. We're having a virtual opportunity. Often we get, you know, hundreds of people show up over for a two or three-week timeframe. So it it can be very beneficial in terms of looking at online opportunities, but we've also recognized that not everyone has the ability to travel or to have access to the Internet, so we've we've tried our best to balance that out. So we we do look forward to bringing back a solid plan for you and and hopefully one that you embrace as your own and and that you feel we've hit the mark.
Okay, one one final question. One final question, Todd, that I thought of as you were speaking. And I believe we did have that discussion at the the steering committee. Is there is a is, is there a possibility that you and your group will either A, come down and see our facilities, or B, have our staff do a virtual tour for you to, at least you get a flavor of what we have to work with currently?
Yeah, so we expect to be in your community and looking at your facilities, looking at your parks, your trails, your waterfront. So we expect to be in person to do that. We may ask a staff person or two from from your end to to come along with us, although we we certainly will be practicing, you know, social distancing and wearing a mask and things of that nature. But but we do want to be in your community to get a good feel for it to, you know, it's one thing to see it on a map and certainly from, you know, Google Earth has provided us with tremendous opportunities to sort of drill down and look at a park from a different angles and and things of that nature. It's not the same as being there. So we look forward to, you know, when the weather starts to to improve because we do want to see your, you know, your trails, your waterfront, your parks, when ideally there's no snow on the ground. So so that will help to inform the plan as well. So absolutely, we will be there to to see your community.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
That's it for from our end and, you know, I do want to acknowledge that Dennis Kwan was taking notes today, but he is an integral part of our our team in preparing the plan. So again, we thank you for your time today.
Okay. Any further questions? Counsel Mellon has a question here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I apologize. I just, a light bulb went off in my head here and maybe it's already been addressed and maybe taken care of. As much as Counsel Lewis alluded to the our older population, but our younger people like in our high schools, our youth advisory committees, have they been reached out to as to get their input because they they could come up something that maybe Counsel Lewis or myself in our golden years wouldn't think of. But so we we have reached out to the youth advisory committees and and the high school. Great, thank you very much. That's.
Yes, yes, we have. And in fact, a couple of representatives from the the school council, so the students attended one of the sessions, stakeholder sessions, and provided input. We also asked them that if they could spread the word out to other students and let them know that, you know, we welcome their thoughts, whether they want to email them, fill out the survey, or provide input through some other mechanism, potentially through their account, the school council. So we are definitely engaging them and and want their opinion because, you know, we recognize that certainly, you know, I'm not a youth, I can't, you know, I don't know specifically what they're looking for unless they tell us. So we want to make sure we we hear directly from them.
Okay, all good. Okay, thank you, Todd. Thank you, Dennis, for appearing to council virtually. We we do look forward to the draft plan and and see what the residents of South Dundas are thinking and we do trust that you will get that compilated in a way that makes sense for us as well. So.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate your time today.
Okay. And with that, I'm going to call for a break till quarter after 10:00 and hopefully Deputy Mayor can come back for our next session on discussion of of additional items. So break till quarter after 10:00. So, break till quarter after 10:00.
Okay, and welcome back to our committee of the whole. So we're moving on to the discussion of additional items, and the additional item today is the airqual Marina, the OPG lease agreement and the draft boat house license agreement insurance requirements that we had started discussions on somewhat in budget, more so at our last council meeting, and we had more questions, so I'll turn it over to the CEO. He has some additional information to go with, and then we in council will decide how we're going to handle this for whatever. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So just to kind of recap, our last meeting on the 24th of January, the agreement with OPG currently expired on December 31st, 2021. OPG has amended their agreement and has forwarded to the municipality, looking for an additional five years. In the agreement, there is a three-month clause that either party can terminate the agreement upon three months' written notice. At our meeting on January 24th, there was some additional questions by council, as well as some clarification that I had provided in the KAR that was provided to council yesterday. And speaking to our insurer, some of the insurance requirements as far as the $10 million, as well as the all risk as far as the boiler machinery covering all property of the license, we do have that currently in our policy, so there's a don't know additional fee needed. There is some amendments that our insurer would want us to make with OPG that are outlined in the report as well. There was some discussion about the fire and alcohol, which I did get clarification from OPG, that the no alcohol was mainly to the additional building that was put in three years ago, that at that time did not meet building code. At that time, it was referred to as using it for the boathouse or for the boaters as a place to socialize and drink, so that was where the no alcohol came from for that use. According to OPG, they still do not allow open pit fires except per municipal bylaw. As well, the other additional questions were, we did ask about subleasing the property if we wanted to look at a third party managing and operating the Marina. OPG is open to it, of course, it would have to get their approval, it would have to go through their legal team for review, but ultimately, as us being the leaseholders, we would be the one liable for that contractor through the operations. And then the last piece that came out during our budget meeting was the weir, which I have provided to OPG an option that came from our budget meeting about putting a fence up. So they're reviewing that right now, and hopefully will get back to me in the short terms that we can make plans to get that done. So right now, I guess, looking for some direction from council as far as our lease, as far as what council wants staff to go back to work at doing long term, and we're here to answer questions. I believe Austin's on as well, too, if council has any questions as well.
Okay. Any additional points at this time, Austin, before we go to council?
No, sir. The only additional point I would make is the fire and alcohol is also included in our Marina guidelines and rules that we provide to boaters every year.
Okay, can you expand on those guidelines, so council knows what technically the guidelines are, and what are the requirements for those who use those facilities, please?
Yes, sir. So through you, Mr. Mayor, the guidelines and rules that boaters and campers are provided each year state that alcohol is not permitted to be consumed or stored on the property, and as well as fires for the Marina specifically, they have to be propane, and they're not able to have open flame fires.
Okay, so knowing the rules and knowing how things have gone in the last number of years, how were the rules observed, and how much enforcement did staff have to deal with?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we have had a couple instances over the past couple of years, but for the most part, boaters and campers seem to be pretty respectful of the rules.
Okay, good to hear. So I will take the privilege to open this discussion up somewhat, and I will say I've kind of calmed down from my rant of the of our budget meeting a bit. However, I'm still in the opinion that the Marina cannot lose this municipality any money or cost residents of this municipality any money. In fact, we should have the aim of trying to have some dollars made at that Marina, so you have a little bit of money to spend on the Marina instead of them coming back to us and saying they want to spend X number of dollars on expansion, or do some capital work. It has to balance through itself somehow, some way. I think on the Marina side, having a supervisor there, and from my own knowledge, when Sally was there a number of years ago, things were run fairly well. Our last one maybe not quite as well, because it takes a good supervisor to run that Marina till everything is perfect, and perfect will probably never happen. But those who use it, you know, have to understand that this Marina is for everybody in South Dundas who has a marine boat, whether it's a canoe or a big watercraft, and if they all get along and everybody respects those rules and don't use it, you know, I know a lot of them use their boat as their cottage, however, it doesn't mean that they can take over the Marina and take 50, you know, a 20 by 30 piece of material in front of them and say that's their waterfront and campground area. I don't think that's fair. If they want to do that, then we need to come up with a plan that everybody can use that kind, do that and charge accordingly. But I think, you know, that Marina has so much potential that if it's done right, and we run it right, and it doesn't cost municipality any dollars, then I can certainly be open to it. If it continues on down the road where we as council and the residents of South Dundas are not comfortable driving down there and enjoying a day, even sitting out there on the old canal system, then there's problems. It's not their little, you know, they can treat it as what they want, but it's everybody can use it that shouldn't be allowed to use it. The building fiasco probably hasn't left this. I was, I would, I'll be honest, I was really disappointed that we were actually going to spend money on something that we should have torn down instead of spending 10 grand on in the first place. So those kinds of things can happen. We have a lease, we're going to probably have a lease agreement with OPG. We don't own it, so let's be respectful of how things should be down there. It is one of our boat launches on the east side of the dam. We do have the one on the west side of the dam, which is part of this lease too, but you know, you may or may not want to do that. So if we do that, then I think we can live with what we're doing. It's a matter of making sure that the rules that we, and it won't hurt for you, Austin, to bring, you know, your Marina plan back. We'll run through the rules and make sure that we as council are comfortable with them, you're comfortable with them, because you, in theory, are going to be the manager over the supervisor. So things can be, as I said, things can be done right. Now, I'll go to the other side of the equation, which is the boathouse alley. Our current lease agreement we have with the majority of them is, in my opinion, a little vague. I did work with Leslie on crafting a few things up, and I think some other staff also worked on it, and it's part of our documents too. And we can discuss the ins and outs of them, but I think, you know, there are certain things that, you know, that we were a little loose on the insurance side, we were a little loose on the building side of it and how things get done. There was, as we all know, there's been some challenges with some of the boathouse owners and what piece of the boathouse alley they own and what they don't own, and what they can build and what they can't build. And so there has to be also recognition that, you know, they are, they need to treat that area with enough respect that not only do we, we as South Dundas, be part of that lease, they have to remember that OPG is part of the lease. And if we got to please OPG on some item and it affects them or affects us, then, you know, it's, it'd be nice if we all worked together and made sure everything worked great down there, because it can do that. But it hasn't been an easy ride down there yet. But as I said, you know, I'm not going to throw all the good apples out for the few rotten ones that are there. I hope that the good apples will make the rotten ones act better, make it more open to everybody in South Dundas that wants to participate in that type of event or facility. And hopefully, they say, because I know there's been a number that have had a boathouse down there and had enough of the shenanigans and sold the boathouse to somebody else and moved on to Prescott. Well, that doesn't help us as a community, you know, when people move off because things are not well, are not done respectfully down there. So that's my two cents worth on it. I, as I said, you know, if council in the end wants to let the Marina go, it won't make me cry very long either. So it's a balancing act. I think somehow, we got to get to that point where not only we as council are comfortable, staff is comfortable, the residents in South Dundas can say that they, they can brag that we have actually a Marina that they feel is a place where people are welcoming and a place that, you know, has a lot of historic value. So with that, Devin, Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. You know, it would be too bad to react to the bad apples. I just, I have a couple of questions, though. How do we deal with the bad apples? Do we have a zero tolerance policy? Has there been, you know, on the complaints that you have received, when you follow up, is there warnings given? Kind of, Austin, if you can comment on that. And also, when we're saying that everything's good, what type of staffing do we have at night and on the weekends at that Marina? Because everything can be good Monday to Friday, and if nobody's there to actually see anything, then I guess I could say it's all good, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So through you, Mr. Mayor, as far as warnings go, so what we do is we typically issue a verbal warning to the boater, camper, patron, if an incident does occur, and then if that isn't, if that doesn't resolve the situation, a written warning is provided. And then essentially, we use the three strikes, you're out mentality. At that point, we also may include bylaw and go that route as well.
Just quickly, Austin, just before you go on to the next question, have we ever had anyone strike out?
As of so far, in my experience, so through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we haven't. We have issued a couple verbal warnings and written warnings, but afterwards, the issues seem to be resolved.
Okay, and are the warnings coming from you or from bylaw?
So initially, they come from me, again, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Initially, they come from myself, as well as the Marina and campground staff. If that doesn't resolve the situation, then it comes from bylaw.
Okay, so we have students issuing the warnings?
No, so through you, Mr. Mayor. So either myself and/or the students are all involved in informing the boater that, or camper, that there has been a complaint or an issue arisen, and they are issued a warning. Typically, it's either myself, or hopefully this year, with a supervisor down there, they will be issuing the warning with the support of myself and bylaw.
Okay. And the other questions as far as staff coverage?
Yeah, so again, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have seven-day-a-week coverage down there as far as staff goes. Last year, without a supervisor, it was, we did find challenges covering all hours of the day, obviously, but typically, we try to cover mid-morning to about 6:00 at night from Monday to Saturday, and then Sunday had reduced hours, just as, in our experience, we find that boaters and campers tend to be either going home for the week, or transient boaters or campers are leaving for the weekend.
So you're saying that all the boaters leave at 6:00 on a Saturday?
No, so through you, Mr. Mayor, if we have any transient boaters that come for the weekend, typically, they are gone by afternoon on Sunday. And in addition to that, the seasonal boaters that do stay, typically, they'll go home on a Sunday evening and then gather whatever they need and come back later in the week for the next weekend. We do have some boaters that stay there throughout the whole summer, but for the most part, the majority of them do come and go.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not trying to be flipping in my questions. I'm just, I'd really like to solve this problem, and we have had, and I've been quite vocal myself about, you know, the times I've gone to that Marina and as a resident and taxpayer in South Dundas, and absolutely felt like I was bothering people by being there, and this is before I sat at the table. So, and, you know, I just, I want to solve this issue. So I do have concerns about only not staffing after 6:00, because if the bad apples are being bad, then really, we've got a, what, a complaint system in place, which means that people that boat next door to each other have to complain on each other, and it creates this very chaotic relationship. So it's far easier to have staff actually identify the bad apples at bad apple times, which is usually Friday after 6:00 and Saturday after 6:00. So I have concerns about that, and I hear what you're saying, when you're saying it can be addressed with the supervisor being present. So I would not want students to have to enforce that, especially if they're there cleaning, and then they become mixed in the mess. I, like I said, the goal is to solve the problem. I'm not, I'm not completely ready to give it up yet. However, my feeling on, especially on that one visit with a nice young couple that wanted to relocate to South Dundas, you know, is the fact that we need to clean it up, and the cleanup is not going to happen by just kind of willy-nilly about there needs to be a strategic plan and maybe a zero tolerance policy for a little bit. So the bad apples are moved on. I mean, I've heard complaints, and you're saying that nobody has been kicked out of the Marina, so I'm kind of wondering if we're dealing with it at high enough level, because I don't want, I don't want any place to be a private club in South Dundas unless it's legitimately a private club. Anything that is, you know, run, paid for, whatever the case may be, and operated, if you will, by the municipality should be free for all. Not a free-for-all, free for all. I have a question. Have you thought about holding some events there, like small events, like Like small events, like a kids' fishing tournament off the dock or something? Like, have we done it, have we thought about any proactive things where we could start to open it up and kind of send the message that it's a place where folks from all of South Dundas, even if they don't have a boat, can visit? Like, has there been any thought about that?
Yeah, absolutely, so again, through you, Mr. Mayor. There is another point on the south side of the marina, just on the south side of the canal there, and we do maintain that area, and it is in the, in our plans to eventually make that a recreation area and more inviting for patrons to enjoy. There are quite a few people who go down to that area and on that south point, they either go fishing or they have picnics or go swimming. There is another spot where they can access the water over there. So that's definitely an area that we've identified and are planning to make more inviting to residents and tourists to come enjoy and enjoy.
I only mention that as just kind of the counterbalance. So if we did go heavy on the zero tolerance to clean it up, then you have to have that counterbalance where you then welcome, welcome that vacuum of people leaving. You welcome the people that you want into the space. I would suggest even having a conversation with the OPP. They usually have that cop with fishing thing or something where the officers will fish with kids or whatever the deal is. That's my concern. If we're going to do this, and I'm willing to agree to the mayor's point that it would be nice to actually have this gem be a sparkly gem and not a gem in the rough that we just kind of deal with issues. There has to be some proactive attention paid to it, and there definitely has to be some strategy, so. That's my comment, Mayor.
Council Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've been around marinas all my life. I guess stick to talking about this one, I'll see this with discussions about. Up to me being a boathouse owner there and being a slip owner, there's. You, Deputy Mayor, recall those bad apples. We all know what happened a couple years ago, and it was basically just a couple boathouse owners, things got out of hand. I think over the last couple of years, like Austin blew through that, everything's pretty much on the up and up. There's, there's no more bad apples as far as I'm concerned, everything's running good. I do agree with, we have to make money. I think a good way to do that is let the, well, I would recommend the go back to like maybe having a committee, and back in the day, before, we used to have one of the slip owners, after hours if someone comes in at seven o'clock and needs fuel, they have a key to give someone fuel, or if someone comes in after someone's closed and whether mercy or needs a spot, the person we put in charge, one of the slip owners would take the money and there'd be revenue we wouldn't lose. People can come in at seven o'clock on a Sunday and leave the next day, so you lose one day's slip. But this, I, not in my terms do I want to see, I think this thing we can, we can make money if it's run properly. It's, it's like you said, it's a gem, and I don't, I agree, I disagree with this about what I'm hearing about the clicks and stuff. Well, it doesn't matter where you go, like I've had, I have a slip at the Chrysler Marina. I've been involved in that, like it's, everyone, you've got to have a click. Just like if you're in the campground, everyone, you have, everyone has their own little group, so they come and they'll have supper or whatever. Like, it's not that you're just going to some places, just, okay, there's no click. Like, our marina is so tiny, like, you go down there, for me, if I was taking the family, that wouldn't be a spot where I would go and walk down through the middle of the marina to look at something. I'd be out at the point, or there's several, or even all the other marinas around. You know, it's not like you're walking down on docks and it's where you would take your family. But, I, um, I don't know how far you want to get into this, as far as, as far as running it, I definitely like to see. I do agree, make money, there's, it's going to be a business of money, but I think, I think that can be fixed very easily if just everyone is paying attention to the detail and stuff. I'm just, I'm going to let it go around the table, I have some comments on the stuff there from the the OPG and stuff like that, but I'm just going to let it go around the table under everyone else.
Council Lewis.
Well, I have a little different opinion on the marina. It only takes one bad apple to ruin the bushel to start with. I find that the marina is, they think it's a private marina. People walk down through the marina and they look that kind of weird, and nine times out of 10, they run off the marina property. It is a public marina. Anybody that wants to go to that marina is more than welcome to go through it. But it seems like our marina is not like that. Is there a click? Yes, there is a click. I don't want to say no to this agreement, but it's all right to give rules and regulations, but they got to read the rules and regulations. To me, I would not be given a verbal or written note. It's a one-shot deal. If I come to see you, you're gone. And I think that's the only way that we're going to get rid of the bad apples. And I'm not even going to talk about the boathouses. I know there is, there is some good boathouse owners on the other side, but there's some bad apples over there too. And it just seems like one side is always trying to get the other side into disagreements, fistfights, and I honestly think if we sign this agreement, that the rules and regulations have to be set down and they have to be enforced. I would go with zero tolerance, and that's the way she's run, and that's all I have to say about that.
Council Melli.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to start by saying, to me, I think it's obvious, in my opinion. A, we either get out of the marina business, which I don't recommend. B, we sublease it out, which I think I wouldn't recommend either, because we are still tied with OPG, so, you know, we, it'd be a, could be a logistic nightmare trying to, you know, us entering OPG and a third party that's running the marina answering to us and trying to keep everybody on board, or we run the thing like it should be run and run it like a business and be a little more diligent on how we run it. Austin, can you clarify, there's no alcohol or no open flame allowed onshore? Is that right, unless it's a propane pit?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, but on the boat, on the boat, they can, they can have a, they can have a beer if they want it on the boat. We don't control that, do we?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we don't have, I guess jurisdiction over what boaters do on their boat, but while they're docked at the marina or on marina property, that's when the zero alcohol and open flame is enforced.
Okay, so I think we need to be a little more clear on that, I mean, I think, you know, when we had the former manager that was there, Sally, I mean, you know, she put in a lot more time than what she got paid for. She was there all the time. I'm just wondering, you know, with us, with staffing issues, or not issues, but, you know, you know, shortages, if you will, I'm just sort of wondering if maybe, you know, if we're going to run this thing, we need a, you know, a marina manager. You go to Prescott and there's a harbor master, I guess if you will, that oversees Prescott. And, you know, what goes on as far as gas, dockage, you know, the whole bit. Now, their marina, I think, is a little bit bigger. Size-wise, I'm not sure, I'm not up on that too much, but I think it's, you know, and it's definitely more pricey, I think. But I think we need more than just our summer students trying to police, you know, what happens onshore, offshore, it's way too much, you know. They can be intimidated, if you will, you know, you need a special person, so, you know, I'm thinking we need to go one step farther if we're going to keep the marina and have a manager there. And Council Wells's point, you know, having somebody there for after-hours, that you can designate, you know, for fuel sales, or if somebody comes in at seven o'clock and they're in transient from Montreal to Kingston and they want a place to dock, you know, if you've got an open slip down on the west end, you know, they could go in there or, you know, want to sell some gas, you know. I think that, that should be looked at, because your manager can't be there all the time. It doesn't matter who you're going to, you know, use. You know, that would have to be priced out, and it, so getting to that, I think we need, to me, it's obvious that we have to raise the fees. We talked about this before, when we were doing the budget, you know, we cut some things out and, you know, we're, I think we're trying to rely too much on fuel sales or stuff like that to try and turn a profit. And I think we need to have a baseline where our slips are more, we charge more. Some people say, well, you might lose some, they might go to Prescott. I know for a fact, I think some came from Upper Canada Marina, come down to Iroquois because it was cheaper. They didn't want to pay the thing. Well, you know, if you want a place to park your boat, you know, I think we need to have enough money there, and that's the baseline for, you know, any future marina success is have enough financial resources there. So I think we need to, to me, raise the price of the slips to reflect a bottom line, and then, you know, the electricity, you know, and water, everything, that fee schedule is more, so, and then go from there, and, you know, where you park, whether you're on the wall or you're in a slip or you're in a service site, you know, it all, I think we need to really look at that, because for us not to put money back into marina is, we're just delaying the inevitable, that the marina is going to, you know, not keep being improved to the point that, you know, people won't want to go there. We got to put money back into the marina and keep it up and improve it so that people will want to come there and will want to pay the, you know, the luxury of having their marina there. I think we have the issue with the marina, it's sort of one entity, and then the boathouses is another entity, and I think we need to, you know, try and, I don't know if it's possible to have, you know, the boathouses. It's on our land, it's not, it's on OPG land that we lease, so we need to have a little bit more control on the boathouses. I realize the buildings are supposed to be up to building code and whatnot, but I think, I think there needs to be some kind of clarification there, because the marina is being policed by us and the boathouse not so much. And if you're going to raise the fees, and I know I've heard it before, there's security issues down there, like in people with their boats, they've got some, people got some good money in boats and in the boathouses, and I think they're, you know, and maybe this is where, you know, you might feel uneasy if you walk down there, because, you know, a stranger walked into that marina. At Prescott, you don't walk into their marina. It's fenced off, I think, pretty well fenced off. So you don't walk into that marina at Prescott, you know, just somebody want to go down and look at the boats. So I think, you know, I'm not saying we lock it up. I do believe it should be open to the public, but there is that security, you know, as far as the boathouses and the boat, and people with, at the marina and the boats, you know, a lot of money in the boats and in their boathouses, so there is that, you know, I could give that impression that, you know, people are feeling uneasy with somebody coming down that they don't know, you know, is somebody going to, you know, swim into my boathouse and do something, or, you know. There has been issues in there where people have been chased off in the middle of the night. I know the one individual that did it, and I think those individuals were probably lucky they didn't get caught when they were trying to steal something a few years ago. But, so that's, I think, something we need to address, the security down there for the people with boats and the boathouses. And as far as, you know, the insurance, you know, on the boathouses, you know, we have the electric issue. Some have meters, some don't, you know. I don't know if we should have meters, you know, for, at each, that's a cost, you know, whether that's a requirement on each boathouse, because I know there is some that are split up, some have their own meters and then whatever. So I think that might be, you know, an issue, I guess, if you will. And in the lease agreement, and I do agree, and I wouldn't go so far as Council Lewis, I think we need to be very, very specific in that lease agreement. They have one, you know, spell it out very, very clearly, you know, if, these are the rules. You follow the rules, you get one warning. If you get a second, well, you won't get a second warning. If you're, if we're called in for that individual again, you know, start the motor, take the exit to your east, goodbye, you know. But I think everybody deserves one warning, in my mind. I've had a few in my lit day, but anyways, you know, so I think, you know, but we need to be more specific. We need to be more, we need to spell it out very, very clearly in that, in that lease agreement or the agreement with, A, with the people in the marina and with the boathouse, you know, and be very specific. Dealing with the boathouse, I believe we only charge $2 for a sublease to the people who have the boathouses, right? Is that, I read that? So, you know, yeah, they got to put their, their boat, they may build their boathouse, but I think, you know, $2, plus they have to provide us with insurance. But I didn't realize it was that cheap to have a lease area.
Council Melli, they do pay, we'll say, property taxes on those buildings, so that's where we have some funds coming to them, but we're not going to be building much with those property taxes from the numbers I hear.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm sure, you know, once we start raising the fees for either the dockage or we start raising the fees for, you know, somebody to have the, but your boathouse up there, they're going to expect more back. So they're going to expect improvements, they're going to expect security, and that's something where we need to, you know, look at the overall big picture, and we need to run this thing like a business. And if it's not run like a business, and I totally agree with what the mayor said, tax dollars should not be subsidized in the marina. That's why we got a lot of the golf course business, so, and, you know, that's the end of, the end of the day is, you know, tax dollars, people that don't have boats or don't use the boathouses or, you know, they shouldn't have to pay or subsidize to keep that marina going. But that marina can make money. I think it can make money, but it has to be run very tight ship, and it has to be run like a, it has to be run like a private-run marina on a municipal level, and that's where we're going to have the issues. And we got to be very specific, we got to be very firm in our lease agreements, in our, if anybody violates, you know, breaks the rules, you know, I don't, like I say, give one warning and you're out. And I don't know how we can bring the boathouses in, and I don't even know if we want to do that, if that's even realistic, you know, bringing the boathouses into, because they, it's such close proximity there that it's sort of hard to separate them out, to my mind, because this is where we got into the disagreement with some of the boathouses and some of the marina. I don't know if that can be under one umbrella, the boathouses and the marina, and if one overall big picture and a manager runs the whole place. And, but I think we need to put our fees up, we need to run it like a business. And if we lose boaters because we raise our fees so that we're, you know, trying to bring that marina up to scratch and run it like a business, so it's not a drain on the taxpayers' dollars, then I guess that so be it, you know. Really, I mean, people got to realize they're going to have to pay for that luxury of having a marina or whatever, but those are the few points that I all have. But those are the few points that I, I'll have for now, Mayor Bywell.
Okay, so as it went around, I wrote a few comments. And don't, nobody take any disrespect to these comments because I think I'm going to bring some history into this and, and Council Wells brought up the committee and I'm going to say, no, 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 no. That's how the, the feeling of ownership kept in, got into this marina. We, you know, municipalities allowed a committee of boaters, one council member to run the show. And while if you're on the committee and then I'm going to, you know, it, it was like at the golf course. No disrespect to anybody who was there before, but those members ran it like it was theirs and they, sometimes the, the thought of, well, we don't need to run a business because we've got the coffers of the municipality behind us and we can just go there and find the money because it seems like that's what they do. This council changed those and we are now looking after it through staff. So I'm still in that boat. I think things have improved over the last four years from that point of view. But I think, you know, we need to disconnect that thinking that those who live there or own there can rule there. And, and I know, as I said, it's improved, but it's not where I think we are comfortable with, I sense that. I do believe though that the staffing thing is something that, in an operational plan, as much as you had one started last year, Austin, you're going to have to come back to this council with that operational plan. There's concerns of how we need to operate that marina as a business. I'm, I'm not in favor of having a, a boating super or somebody like, even at the campground, you know, you, you think it's easy. Well, we'll just pick out a camper that we feel can look after the place when we're not there. Just asking for trouble. That person's going to be in trouble because they have to live there. And, you know, and, and that's how slippage happens, that's how favors happen, that's how blinders go on, that's a lot of, you know, we, if we're going to run it, we're going to run it. So the operational plan has to, you know, neutral in the end. It should be making money set aside for future capital. It should have enough staff to run that place like a business. That means, you know, you've got to have more than just students. A supervisor has to be a very competent supervisor and knows how to deal with running a business like a marina, like a campground and how to deal with issues. And, and some of those hours may be more flexible than, you know, they need to have some flexibility in their hours. Because in my opinion, like, we only sell fuel when we have staff there and, and we set, these are the hours, everybody knows the hours we run our fuel business. Because that, that, you know, it's, it's a profit center, but if you're coming down, if you're coming down the river and you can't make it to Prescott and you pull in because we, they know there's fuel in Iroquois and they get there and, well, there's nobody here, we've shut down. Well, how am I going to get to Prescott? Or you can stay, you know, well, you can stay overnight. Well, you can't because there's nobody there. So you've got to have all those thinking, you know, to run it as business means a lot more hours staff-wise. And I don't know how you're going to run it and make, you know, we have to either charge more or figure out how you're going to make those dollars and make that work. The, the boathouse lease, I think we'll, we'll do that one a little bit separately. I know that some of it's brought up, but let's concentrate on the marina part first because that's our baby. The boathouses can be on their own little whatever. And I agree, Council Mellon, you know, the more, if we charge them, then they're expecting more services. And I don't really want to do, go down that road. We have enough work on the one side, let alone trying to do anything on the other side, so. And we just spent 12 grand on, on the, on the ramp and that's okay. I could, the ramp is kind of, it's like the Marsburg ramp. We're not going to, you know, we don't run it as a business. It is a service we provide for the municipality, whether you're a boater or not a boater. It provides something for people that, from anywhere to go into the river at, at locations that are probably deemed better than others, so. But I think that, I think the key in the end is this council needs to see an operational plan that makes sense and, and works for this marina, I think. You know, I would continue with signing the lease, I think the lease is okay, that million is okay, we, we, it's covered. They have concerns, we need to deal with those concerns and make sure they're respected. And we always have the understanding we can get out of this thing. This is not a forever, if, if, you know. And, and the same with the rules, you know, the mention, and I know I'm jumping around a bit. But the operational plan needs to, we need to see the rules and regulations that those have to, that use that facility will be told. This is what our expectations are, they should be respected. I'm kind of like Council Mellon, I'm, I'm always willing to slap somebody on the hand first time and second time, no. But we need to be somewhat firm because if we keep on slapping on hands, in the end they say, well, you've toughened up my butt now hard enough, it doesn't bother me anymore. So it doesn't, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you know, if we, as I, it has to be one of those places and I, you know, you're right. There's marinas that are private. And I think, I don't think we want a private marina. We want a marina that people are somewhat more welcoming than, and I don't expect people to go into, you know, the guy's boat's there and you're going to pitch a tent and have the barbecue there. No, that's not fair either, but somewhere in between where, you know, there's space that people can do and, and enjoy the river from either that side. And I like Austin's idea of looking at what we can do on the south side. I know there were plans there before from other groups and, and they were kind of a little bit too dreamy and never got anywhere. And that's what happens if you don't have a realistic plan, they just dream on and it never get done. But let's see where we can go. Do you have a mayor? Marina only and then we'll go around on the boathouse thing on basically the lease.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it pretty much said what it had to say. I too grew up around marinas and have amazing memories of going to marinas with my Uncle Danny that had a massive boat and playing pinball and doing whatever. And so if we're going to put our resume on the board about who's been around marinas, I've, when I'm saying I want it to be open, I mean that if a couple goes with some sea dews and wants to pay the amount to put the sea dews in the water, it's not a frigging fiasco. That's what I mean whenever I say I want it open. Obviously, people are going to have friendships and, and whatever. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is if you go there to get a service, and we are in the fuel business. So, Austin, you're saying there's no staff after six on a Saturday and, and Sunday? So when I'm out on my boat, if I had a boat and I, you know, get home from work or whatever, want to go for a cruise, seven o'clock on a sunny, summer weekend, I can't do anything gas-wise or docking-wise or whatever at our marina? Is that, I just want to clarify, is that what I'm hearing?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Last year in 2021, we only had three students down there. So combined, that's 105 hours we had to cover between the campground and marina. So with covering seven days a week at both facilities, those hours were up until 6:00 PM. Boaters that were, that did come in and, and request gas were made aware that those were the hours. The hours were posted throughout the season. So to your point, Deputy Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so I understand staff management extremely well. I would think that when you're moving forward with your operational plan, you have to make the weekends and high season, that's how they refer to it, July and August, as a priority. So if you only have X number of students, you make sure that the high season periods, especially on a hot summer weekend are covered to do that. Because, you know, when I saw the budget, our fuel and how it's not a moneymaker, it's a money loser, I, you know, I was kind of curious to that and now you can see why. So I, I just, I think, I think as to the mayor's point, that operations plan, yes, you do not have an abundance of staff, but there are other places that don't have an abundance of staff that are able to make it work. I think also when you're hiring the summer students, and I've done a lot of that, you have to make sure that they're available on the weekends, that they're not going for vacation for two weeks at a time, that, you know, if they want the summer job, they are committed to the hours with maybe a little here and there. But I can't tell you how many great students I turned away at the Long Sioux Parkway because they'd come in and say they wanted three weeks vacation and that's not possible. So, and working weekends is a priority. So I think if we get aggressive and, and change our mindset with that, I think you can make some changes and, and I, I hear what people are saying where they want a little wiggle room. But if somebody is identified as a problem, you need to get rid of them. If what I'm hearing, there are no longer any problems there, then I guess you won't have as much paperwork. So, good to go.
I'll go to Council Wells first, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with this. I always see Austin come back with a plan. How he's going to turn this around and make the municipality money, money. And I agree with a supervisor. Like our last supervisor, I don't know, I think everyone knows this from council, that he actually was a slip owner too. And so as far as the, the committee, yeah. Like I'm actually the one that, back in the very first year, I'm the one that brought it forward to do, get rid of the committee. And I was down there at the time, I was, I owned a boathouse for five years down there. I was on both sides all the time. But I still believe a supervisor that is actually, whether it's one that owns a slip or not, like he is paid, it's not a free thing. He is paid as a supervisor to oversee the things. And I, I don't believe like there's, I don't know, something, the smallest favoritism, there's probably is, there's always going to be that. And it doesn't matter whether it's a marina, campground, golf course, going to the dump. There's always, there's always a favoritism, a little bit. But it, it's not saying it's always right, but it's out there and it's going to happen. But I think if you come back, operational, as far as setup in your plan that, I, I agree with Deputy Mayor about like your, your, your month, July and August, to have people like, you, you start, start your students at noon and have them work till eight o'clock or something. And the manager comes in in the mornings and he works from nine till noon. Then he, he directs staff and all that, three hours, he's at each facility, campground or the marina. You have, you have a layout and you have your plan to go and you have your students do the, do the weekends and split it up. Like, I'm not going to tell you how to make up a, a schedule. But I, I'm sure you can figure it out, Austin, too, that we address those times where people come in and will end up making extra income that way. So I think our operational plan is really good. And I, I think, and I do believe, because I, I personally, I've been down there. So I've seen the good and I've seen the bad down there, more good than bad. I, I still believe if we could get someone as a supervisor that actually has a slip down there and like we did our last supervisor. And actually, even, even going back there, Sally had a boathouse back there for all the years she, she worked there. Like she, so she was, she was there too, all the time with the boathouse. It's not that it's out of the realm to have someone that's actually renting from the municipality to actually be a supervisor too. And I think that would help. So, like at the end of the day, this agreement, we can get out at any time. It's not like you're, it's in stone. So if things go south really, really bad, which I, I can't foresee, we have a lot to get out. So I think if it was a good plan and the way things are going now, I think this can be a moneymaker and it's just, we just got to pay attention to detail. That's it for now.
Council Lewis, any further?
Just one question for you, Austin.
Just a second, Council Wells, can you mute yourself? I'm hearing your background. Don't believe you're muted from what I see on the screen. Okay, you're good, thank you. Go ahead, Council Lewis.
One question for you, Austin. Have you ever decided to maybe after hours, put a cell phone number up? Where maybe, excuse me, where an employee is about three to five minutes away so they can, if somebody needs gas or if they want to get a slip for the night, that they just call that cell phone number? And who's ever on duty can go take care of it?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, throughout the season, we had posted our after-hours emergency number as well as my number and our on-call number. So if anyone were to come in after hours, they would be able to call one of those three numbers and, and express their concerns or what they're looking for and we can go from there. But we did have those three numbers posted throughout the season last year.
Okay, great, great. I didn't, I didn't know that, of course, I didn't visit the marina last year, so. Nope, great, fantastic, thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Anything further, Council Mellon?
Yeah.
Just marina side, well, the old boathouses on a lease basis.
I'll keep my comment.
That's okay.
The launch fees, which we don't have anymore. You know, at the time, I realized we had Marsburg and Iroquois and, you know, honestly, that's a source of revenue. I know there was people complaining about the launch fees, but, you know, if you're running a, running a marina with a boat ramp.
Well, you can always bring a motion back to the council table and we do our fees schedule to, to put fees on them. This council decided it can always be reversed, it's not the end of the world. I think we had our reasons before, we had our reasons and we changed it, so go ahead.
As far as, you know, any revised fee schedule and, you know, obviously what I'm hearing, what I've said, you know, we need more staff, we need a manager down there. Obviously, you know, there's going to have to be, we're going to have to work, I think, through 2022 to, you know, get ourselves lined up going for the future because I don't know if we can get this, you know, we've got to bring a fee schedule and we'd have to, you know, decide if we're going to have a manager, whether we're going to have more full-time staff down there or how we're going to, you know. I agree that we can, you know, stagger maybe the summer students around a little bit. But when they're running from the campground to the marina and somebody's coming in on a Friday or Saturday into the campground and you've got somebody coming in on a Friday or Saturday into the marina, you know, if they're coming in there after work or they're coming there for fuel at the marina or they're coming there with their camper, you know, it's, it's, I can see we're going to need, we're going to need more bodies. Because I don't think we can cover both of them adequately with the staff that we have. We can try, I, I'll let, you know, we need an operational plan, I totally agree with that, I totally get it. I just, you know, if we're going to have people coming in on a Saturday or a Friday into the campground and you need somebody there till eight or nine, I've been at campgrounds and people are coming in there at nine or 10 o'clock at night. You know, so, you know, and I heard last year, you know, the same thing, we, you know, nobody was there, either at the campground or at the marina. So how we're going to juggle that around, you know, do we put the, the hours up, post it, yes? You know, I think it needs to be, you know, whether what we're going to be open or what we're not. I mean, there's a couple of weeks in the summer when the Quebec Navy comes down through, you know, it's a real hotella of people doing the Montreal-Kingston-Ottawa circuit. So, you know, there's opportunity there if, you know, we've got to promote ourselves as a place, actually a stopover other than Chrysler Marina or, you know, Prescott or wherever. You know, but we need to have the bodies there to, to run the thing, police the thing, sell the gas, sell the extra slips, if we've got an extra slip that somebody wants to spend the night. So we need an operational plan and I don't know. So, we need an operational plan and I don't know, I guess it'll be, we'll wait to see if, if staff can, you know, put something together between now and, I realize this is the first part of February, but time flies quickly and we need to have this out there. Have we had in May renewed already last for this year? We probably have, haven't we? Like, you know, probably most of them have renewed.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, we have received approximately 15 deposits for this year as well as confirmation from another few boaters as well.
So anyways, I mean, it's, it's something we got to work on and I'm, I fully support an operational plan and, you know, I sort of agree with what the mayor is saying, you know, we got to, we got to get it. I'm not, I'm not happy with running a marina with a zero line, on the budget line because we're just, you know, delaying the inevitable that, you know, if we're not making improvements, we got to be making enough money that we're building a reserve up for improvements back into that marina. I have no problem with us as, you know, taxpayers, like you say, you know, improving on the boat ramp or the boat launch, you know, that, that, that's something. But I mean, the core down there, you know, keeping things up, otherwise things will start to sort of fall apart if you don't have enough money, reserve, you know, make a profit. You know, we're not making a profit, we're reinvesting it back into it and that's, we got to show that, that we're reinvesting any profit we're going to get by increasing or whatnot back into the marina. So, I think that's all, Mayor.
Okay, so Austin, I think council would like to see a new operational plan for that marina and you have something more to say before because I'd like to wrap this a little bit up on.
Just when do we do our summer student hiring? We know we need the summer students and I have a summer student that's living in my house, he's already put applications out. And as somebody who did a lot of hiring for the Parks Commission, we never waited until April. I think I did interviews Easter long weekend. So, are we, are we going aggressively going after to get the best candidates for the positions?
Shannon's going to answer that.
So, I can, I can add, so all of our summer students postings are already out.
Okay.
We're recruiting early. In the past, we have waited a little later, but this year we've got it out early enough.
Yeah, the key is to lock them in.
Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Because you can advertise, but then if you don't interview till June.
Agreed. If I can add just a few comments from what I've heard. So, in the past, we talk about festivities or events we've had down there. So, prior to COVID, we used to have the model submarine fun day. It was a gentleman that I, I worked with there that came down there, had a small group that would have these model submarines that they would run on a, on a weekend. Hopefully with us getting out of COVID, that will continue down there. As well, we used to have the poker run, I know it was run by some of the committee members before. That happened every year up till three, four years ago as well too. So, hopefully some of those things will start coming back a little bit as we get out of COVID. But in speaking with, with Austin, just through email, what we're prepared to do is bring back an operational plan. I know we have a committee the whole scheduled for March 3rd, so that will allow Austin and myself to work together to bring a plan back for March 3rd if that council, work with council.
Okay, I think that's, that's what, you've, you've heard our, all our ideas, I know that, you know, encapsulate them in a plan that, that will work for us and we'll see where we go. I, you know, I do believe 2022 is that year where we're going to at least turn the corner a bit and if we have to charge more, we have to charge more. But I don't want to set the plate up for the next council, whether it's all of us or none of us, as I always say, that all of a sudden somebody's going to say here, what's going on with the marina, it's losing money or how do we make it better, where we could have done that already and that's, you know, the point of, of what we need to do. And as I said, you don't, you don't want to stand up in, in, at the Iroquois Civic Center in early October and have to defend something we did because we didn't do it right. I mean, that sounds political, but you know, it is that year, I'm sorry. We got to, we got to run it like we should have run it and it's our last go and if we don't do it, so sad on us. We, we didn't try, we didn't do our jobs as a whole. I know some of us would like a tosser down in the gutter and that's all right, but I think the majority want to see if we can make this thing go at a, at least not only a balanced budget, the balanced budget with profits put aside for capital improvements and a reserve, which we really don't have. The reserve came from big piggy bank that we all own, so that's not fair. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Madam Clerk, she's got a new boat house lease that we're going to, in my opinion, require all new and current boat house owners to sign because it has some improvements in it. So, go ahead.
Sure, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as, as you alluded to, we did work on this collectively and I think this is something that council had expected or has discussed previously to update this. So, given that we are not the landlord, landowner, we have changed all referenced from landowner to leaseholder because we actually leased the land from OPG. And then we added in some recitals just to kind of clarify the relationship we have with OPG, that we have, we have signed the lease, we are the leaseholder and that the OPG agreements would supersede this, the signing of this agreement between the municipality and any boat house owner. And then moving through, we did consult with our acting chief building official and updated under section four, some requirements for the building, if there were any changes made or new construction of a boat house. And then under point six, we've updated to include reference to clean, the requirements to clean up after ice, storm or fire damage. In addition, under section seven, with respect to the license itself, we would be requiring if any changes were made, sixty, we would provide 60 days notice to the boat house owners. And then a clause also that allows the municipality to amend the rules at any time, but that would be provided in writing with 30 days notice. A requirement for the leasing to provide the municipal office with updates to change of address. And then the insurance requirement, which was schedule A, and what we would be updating to require a change from one million to two million and that the boat house owner would be required within 10 days of executing the agreement to provide that insurance proof, otherwise the agreement would be considered null and void.
Okay, and then, and Madam Clerk and I also mentioned about that second paragraph that would be taken out of schedule A, so we're not directing them to where they get insurance, we just want insurance, they can figure it out themselves because I know that we've had brokers call us and say, what kind of insurance you want? In the end, if we have that covering what we need to cover, at least it's something. I don't know if two million is enough, but we started at a million, which is not even close to enough this day and age and because anything can happen and that is a little bit higher risk area. So, anyway, as Madam Clerk said, I, I did work with her on it. The initial lease was very basic, didn't even mention insurance, didn't mention about the OPG lease and I think if you're going to have a good lease with boat housing owners, this is one that I think is, is fair to us and fair to them. I know, we're not expecting to jump any hoops I don't see in there. I know that the director of planning enforcement, the chief building official, in the past have had issues with building code and placement of boat houses, so I think having this, those lines in there certainly work and we certainly, no, we're not expecting them to be picture perfect, but I think a reasonable construction is what are expected. So, anyway, comments on, on the lease and I guess in the end, I, as I said, you know, we're willing to, the boat houses are there, I can't just go make them magically disappear. We'd hope they all get along. Yeah, they're not all going to get along because we know there's two that'll never get along. And public knowledge, I'm not going to, you know, but I also know there's some real good ones there and, and they tolerate some of it, I speak with them, but there's also ones there that, you know, it's, anyway, we won't go any further. Hopefully we, they can all get along and in the end, electricity, I know some of it's on joint, some of it's their own, that's not our problem, so. Okay, Captain Mayor?
Yeah, it's a definite improvement. So, we're comfortable that if, with this agreement, say we, we had an opportunity or a situation where we just walked away, then the boat house owners are left dealing directly with OPG?
I guess in theory.
Okay, and if we terminate a contract, and it's probably in here, but my head hurts, if we terminate the, the contract, how, what, what section does it say where they're able to?
It's in the recitals that it.
Thirteen?
You know, at the beginning, that, that in theory, we own it, we lease it from OPG. If those lease things change, then it, it can impact their lease.
But say we want things to change, so we're keeping the, the marina, but we don't want the boat house person there.
I guess that'll be a discussion that you'd have to have with OPG first to separate the two out because they're R1 lease, right?
Okay, okay, so, okay.
And I don't think we're prepared to go down that road. I think we're all trying to make this thing work for this year and then if somebody down the road wants to change it, you know, in theory, if, if we told OPG, we want to keep the marina separated out, let the boat houses run on their own, they'd have to form an association, deal with OPG directly.
Okay.
That'd be my vision of it, but, and OPG may say, we don't want them out, but I don't see that, but you know, it is what it is.
But, but the recourse, so say we've got like 99% or 95% of the boat houses are fabulous, but then you get one kind of like a tenant who is creating a ruckus, basically we have no, no power to get rid of them, right? We have no power to deal with that problem.
I would say technically not, but from what I'm reading, no, there's no, we don't have enforcement on, on issues down there, no. They're, it's like they're renting a piece of, they're, they're leasing a piece of leased property to do what they want on that leased property with, you know, it'd be no different in your, in your house. Yeah, I know, on to property taxes, but I mean, but in, if, you know, if you're the rowdy neighbor on Stewart Drive and everybody wants to get rid of you, they'll have to figure it out because it's not our problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, there are, you know, there are situations actually right now in the village in Morseburg where there is a neighbor that nobody, everybody wants to get rid of and they can't get rid of and we have, and that's a challenge too, right? How do you deal with it? We can't fix everything.
No, no, and I'm not trying to fix everything, I'm just, from a staffing perspective, from a whatever perspective, it'd be nice to, to have some way to, to, you know, some endgame kind of thing. Because if I'm, I win the boat house lottery and I've got a boat house, I'm just going to be like, okay, I can do whatever I want. That's all I'm saying, so.
There aren't, there are no new boats that's going up. It's, this is the space.
Yeah.
They're all filled now, there was a hole and it's filled now.
Okay.
But it becomes a horse trading sort of deal. Any comments from a staff point of view on, on issues down there or?
Continues to be, we continue to deal with it on an annual basis. I will agree, it has gotten better over the last few years, but something that, it's always a challenge for sure. There is 26 boat houses right now that's currently down there. Just for information for councils, while too, we have been dealing with MPAC, so how taxes are normally assessed, it's one rule number and then it's divided amongst the square footage of each of those boat houses as far as what they pay for taxes. That information's very outdated, goes back to the 1970s. So, MPAC is, is prepared, once the nice weather is, they're actually going to get on a boat and take proper measurements to get the square footage. So, all the assessment will be updated and more accurate so that everybody's paying their fair share of taxes based on that, on that total assessment, so.
So, they're assessed as a group and then divided up. How is that fair to the rickety one in the end and then the mansion in the middle and then the very good one on the other end? How is that fair?
Yeah, you're, you're right, and that's, that's where the information has not been updated. So, MPAC is working with us now to get that accurate information as far as square footage, but it, it's not a, a perfect science by any means, it's.
So roughly, what would the, what would somebody pay?
Probably a couple hundred dollars in taxes probably a year.
Okay.
I've heard $350. That's the number I heard on, on a fair sized boat house.
Okay, so when we have the fees discussion, I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, anything further? That's it? That's it?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry, it's all right. You got more on your mind, I understand. Council Wells, go ahead, boat house leases and that whole, you've been there, so. You're not on mute, you're still on mute, I can see that from here. There you go.
Things not cooperating today for any reason.
There you go.
For Hawaii, as far as leases go, there's a lot of education that has to maybe be brought up when you're, you're dealing with a lease. Like I, I have the boat lease and right now I've actually, I have two ground leases with the federal government, one in Calabogie, one in, one in Chalk River that we pay some every year, two for the lease, just for the lease itself, which we don't have this here at the, at the boat houses. We do pay property taxes. My crown lease in, the one in Chalk River and Calabogie, I pay school taxes, I pay property taxes and I lease one acre of land from the, from the federal government. So, and which we are here and there, all those tax are based on, you can't take an assessment from someone that has a boat house that's a $20,000 boat house and a $50,000 boat house at the other end. Like, like Shannon said, it's, it's the overall assessment. And that's, that's the same with any, whether it's OPG lease or ground lease, it's an assessment of whether, whatever municipality is, it's offset by that, but it's, it's dictated by impact now. So, it's not like we can just say, okay, we can charge more leases, it's, it's based on the tax schedule. As far as placing the thing, the boat houses are their own, like we, we have this OPG lease, so we can't separate it. Look at the map like the, there's land going up all the way there that weird, it's all part of the lease, so I guess OPG, if it's, if they want, they could separate it. But as far as, as far as placing that, like everything there laws to, like they're, say there's rules now, but you, you got a lease, there's no special rules, that lease agreement will fall underneath all the municipal bylaws. If someone's at the boat house and they're, they're making noise, well, they're, they're subject to the noise bylaws, their, their property standards, even though there's a bunch of garbage out there, even though it's a lease, they're still, they still have to follow all the bylaws. So, when it comes to placing, basically the municipal bylaws is the one that takes over whether it's a lease or not or whether it's privately owned, like the mayor would do, like you can't, you got one bad apple, you can't just, you just can't get rid of them, it's just like out of resonance, right? But insurance, to go from one million to two million, it's, it's not a big deal. I would, I would be fine with the one million, I'd be fine with the two million. But another, let's, Mayor, this draft there, you and Danielle, was it sent out to council?
It was part, it should be at the bottom of your council package.
I, I didn't see it.
Right, it's on page 27 of your agenda. Everybody found, you got the lease on your agenda?
No. Everyone got it? Because I'm trying to, I'm looking at this one right here, I can't, why isn't it coming up? So that's the same, you said 27, Mayor?
Page 27 and 28 are the lease, and page 30 is the insurance requirement, Schedule A.
Because I'm looking at the OPG lease.
Yeah, I'm beyond that. Anyway, you keep looking, Council Wells.
Okay, no, sorry, Mayor, for whatever reason, I, it's there, oh, that's fine. Yeah, like, I, as far as the lease agreement I had for the five years I owned the boathouse, it was pretty loose, basically. I do agree that we have to produce insurance, whether it's one or two million, like I said, it doesn't really bother me because it's not, wouldn't be much price difference anyways. But definitely, as far as, I know prior, I haven't looked at this, the old lease agreement, because it's only boathouse three years ago, but there was a thing in there before, I think, Mayor, about if it got to the point where the boathouse was beyond repair or damages, it was something in there that either the person leasing took over and fixed it, or we would either remove the structure or whatever. So I believe that was in there, by not agreeing, but I'm sure it's there. As far as the electrical goes, just to clarify for people, back with the Rita St. Lawrence, at the time, they, it's all just, it's one line coming in, and what they did, Rita St. Lawrence would charge everyone a delivery fee for it, and whatever accumulation of hydro, and it was split between 26 boathouses. Exactly, so everyone, even though there's one source coming in, we, which I thought Rita St. Lawrence was 26 times dipping because they're charging everyone a fee, but there is a line coming off the main line, so I can understand that. There is people, I was one of them, that put my own service in, just for the simple reason this way, if I wanted to, I had a bubbling system in my, in my boathouse where it ran these pumps that would keep my water open year-round, based on the way my little deck out front was, it was mounted to the bottom of the, bottom of the block. So I would use, consume a lot more hydro, so it's just under my own doing, I put my own in. And since then, there's been four or five different people that opted to throw a meter in, just for the fact that you're not, gives you a peace of mind that, say, if you want to do, leave your light on 24/7, well, that's your prerogative because you're paying for the hydro, but instead of you're splitting it 26 ways, you have to be, do your due diligence that you're not, you're not overusing or to the extent where you're taking advantage of the other boathouses. So that's just a little clarification of the way that might go work up there. But, no, I think, once I read through the new one here, the draft, the insurance was a big thing, which we should have, thing, and as far as the taxes go, and as far as the lease agreement goes, if you want to put a $50 fee on each thing, like, that's not uncommon. Like I said, I have two crown leases. We pay on a four-year cycle, so we pay every four years, we pay a lease. Like, my one there is, I think it's $400 for the four-year lease, so then you pay your school taxes and your property tax and everything to the municipality you're in or township. So I think, I think moving forward, if we stick to this thing, this new lease agreement, everything should be good and should work perfectly. Thank you.
Council Lewis?
I'm going to keep on...
Short and sweet. It's nice to see a boathouse lease that we can understand, and certain things are put in it. It's always, that other lease, it was, whoa, it was something else. I like this lease. Good work.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Council Mellon?
Yeah, like, I mean, you know, we've touched on a few, you know, issues, I guess. You know, if there's a property standard issue, I know a few years ago, I have them, and I don't know, you know, some of the boathouses were getting in bad shape, but I mean, it's a property standard issue, or it's, like Council Wells said, if, you know, it's a noise, or noise bylaw, you know, you know. Those issues either have been dealt by our bylaw officer, or I guess, if you will, by the OPP. That's sort of why I, you know, we don't have much control on the boathouse side. That's what I was thinking out loud when I said bringing the boathouses under the marina, so we would have some control over. My biggest worry on that is if, you know, if things went south on the boathouse side that we really can't control, and OPG says we're pulling the lease, and they pull the lease on the marina. That's where my thinking is going. They could do it the opposite way around. They could say, "Well, we're, you know, we've had issues with the marina, we're going to pull the whole lease, and we lose the boathouses." So splitting the two, you know, might be a nightmare. I don't know if that's even doable. I don't personally think, probably, OPG wants to get into separate agreements like we are with the boathouse. You know, they're not going to want to have 26, 27 different separate agreements. It would have to be. So that's sort of why I was thinking, you know, somehow, if we had some control over the boathouse with, incorporated in with the marina, but that's just my fear that, you know, one or the other may jeopardize the lease somehow, somewhere. You know, we went through that process there a few years ago, where things were sort of going south up there, and, you know, that's, that was a very real possibility. You know, OPG could just say, "Well, I don't want to hear this anymore." So one other clarification, the agreement is yearly, or is it like for five years? Is it a one-year, is it, it has to be renewed yearly?
Sorry, are you asking the boathouse?
Yeah, boathouse.
I think going forward, we would like it annually, an annually renewal and an annual insurance requirement.
Yeah, so it's an annual thing? Okay, yeah, I think that's important. I saw also in the insurance requirement, they have 10 days after signing the lease to get their insurance. I would actually flip that around. When they come in to sign the lease, they can show us their insurance, because I don't think we need to be chasing anybody down if you've got your insurance.
It's a, it's a...
It's a flip.
It's a flip on their side, too, eh? But then again, if you're going to go buy a house, and I know you haven't done that for a bit, but I mean, if you go buy a house, you're expected to have insurance in place, whether you own the house or not, ready to go that day. So that means you've already done your due diligence of what kind of insurance you need, so.
That was the only real...
And I, so, yeah.
Real issue I saw with the insurance, I, you know, I just don't think we need, you know, I'm assuming everybody's going to, you know, otherwise, staff's got to go back and say, "Okay, we got the lease agreement signed from, you know, Joe Blow over here, but we never got his insurance notification."
Well...
You know, but I mean, that's, that's sort of my, and I really, really like the idea of impact coming in, and can we have them evaluate each house, each boathouse separately? Give us a value, and then just build them separately? Or are they going to evaluate the whole thing again? Because I, that's terribly unfair, like, somebody's got to, you know...
So, for you...
Go ahead.
The issue is, it's deemed as one property. The only way to actually get them assessed separately would be to officially do a survey of each property. That's the challenge we have right now, right?
Yes and no. I will counter this. Whereas, most people just have a simple house and a garage.
Yep.
You take my farm property, or Council Mellon's farm property, or anything, Council Wells, we have a series of buildings. Every one of them is assessed a value on our one property, and then they make up the number. Because if you dig deep enough into the M-PAC numbers, they literally have valued, you know, "I got a new shop, they're going to value it, and I'm going to pay more taxes because of that." And they, in theory, could do it. We can ask them and see if they would, willing to do it, and see if that's worth the effort. Like, investigation is never a bad thing. How's that?
Right, no, absolutely, and I think M-PAC is willing to work with us, so we'll definitely, you know, go back to them and see what, how far they can go to make sure we are actually getting accurate assessments, so people are paying the proper fees.
Yeah, and I think that's very important. It'd be fair right across the board, I mean, to everybody. And like Mayor Bybell says, like, I mean, you don't pay, you know, your $2 million liability. I got the, you know, the silos at this, machine shed at that, like, there's different, you know, value amounts on each building or each, you know, tractor or whatever. You can have a blanket coverage, but I think, I think we really need to, you know, if that's a possibility, I think that would be, that would go a long ways to rectifying that. But, yeah, okay, it's a one-year lease, okay, yeah, and, you know, the impact thing, and like I said, the prop, you know, that was the only, you know, my thinking, Mayor Bybell's when, you know, trying to, but I think it's, you know, it's probably left, better left, if everybody can kiss and get along, two separate identities, if you will, you know, with the marina and the boathouses, but my biggest worry was, one could, you know, ruin it, and OPG get pissed off and say, "Well, we're out of the business." Well, you know, you go up at Cardinal, I mean, that's basically what happened to Cardinal Marina, they, you know, I don't know what, the breaking point was there, and there were boathouses there, and their OPG pulled the lease, or whatever, and it's gone. So, you know, we don't want to get into that, so. So when we lease that out, yes, it's renewed on a yearly basis, can it be, I guess, if you will, a five-year renewable one, like, every year? Like, so somebody, you know, we can't do that because they could pull the plug.
All right, so right now, the lease is a forever lease.
Yeah.
I think what we need is that the insurance requirement becomes an annual duty. They must bring the insurance in by the renewal date, and if not, then they in contravention of the lease. Would that be a fair way of saying it? Because you can't have them come in and sign a new lease all the time. I think that's, that's over the top. They're not used to that. But the insurance requirement is, is an annual thing that you need to approve to us as a municipality. Would that be, make sense?
Yeah, so any boathouse ownership, I guess, if you will, so if somebody wants to get out of the boathouse ownership business, we have to approve, if I wanted to sell my boathouse.
They have to sign a new lease. The new owner has to sign a new lease.
Yeah, but they, but then the boathouse owner would sell his boathouse, and then have to sign a new lease with us. Okay, yeah. I don't, I mean, it's hell, excuse me, it's better than what it was, that's for sure.
Well, the challenge with, the current one is, there's no insurance requirements. Even Council Wells agrees, you know, it is very plain and basic, and leaves it open to interpretation, and leaves us open to some challenges, especially on the lease, has left the building staff challenged on building code issues and platforms are where they sit. So this fixes it up a bit. I think what we can ask Shannon to do is ask OPG if they be, what their thoughts are on splitting the two properties, boathouses versus marina, but I don't know where you're going to put the line, because we have the ramp in the middle, so. The ramp, yeah, so, what do you think? Go ahead, Shannon.
Yeah, no, just looking back at the new agreement that OPG provided to us, so under Section 6, and it does acknowledge that we, as being the holders, do have agreements with the boathouses. So it does reference separately that we have agreements executed with the boathouse owners.
Yeah, that we can sublease out.
Yep.
And that's where, I guess, if we wanted to sublease out the marina, we would have some, we'd have to have something in there for the marina, too. But, yeah, I saw that where that covers us for the boathouse.
So certainly, I can reach out to OPG just to see what their initial thoughts are down the road, if we did look at having two separate lease agreements, one for the boathouse and one for the marina, what they'd be open to. I would probably imagine that being one full property, I can't imagine them being in favor of doing separate leases, because it gets quite confusing, I think. But definitely, I can something, I can reach out to OPG just to see their thoughts.
The electrical issue, I brought it up, and Council Wells has sort of addressed the two. I guess, you know, if somebody figures they're being unfairly charged for electricity that they're not using, they can meter it at that point.
Council Mellon? Not our problem.
No, it's not our problem.
Okay, so I won't eat, it's not even part of this discussion. Not our problem. I don't care about how you get power to your barn, I don't care, it's not my problem. So I know they, as Council Wells has alluded to, is a bit convoluted. It was one big system. Some don't have, cut that tie because they know that somebody think they, if someone lives there and you're all in one big system, it doesn't work, so. Anyway, anything further? Not on the power thing?
I don't think...
Okay, anything further on the lease agreement, per se? Madam Clerk, you've noted the little changes, and you'll bring it...
I have, and I just, I guess, just to further allude that if council is in agreement with going that, going this way and executing a new lease with all the owners, the intent would be to openly communicate with a cover letter, just explaining the rationale for the changes, having a main point of contact for the municipality, and just so they know that we're willing to work with them to, you know, have a fresh start.
Yeah.
Yep.
And hopefully, most of them understand that this is not a bad thing, it's just the right thing to do. Okay, so I'll come to a council meeting in the future, too. Anything else on marina, OPG? Okay, so the OPG agreement come to council next meeting, too?
Yes.
Okay, and then we all know direction on the other stuff. There's nothing out further on here, so with that, then, I'll thank council for their work this morning. I'd like to thank the consultants for tuning in, even if they're not here anymore. Like, thank staff for their work on the information for today, and like, thank the audience for participating. Madam Clerk, your motion, please.
Sure. Moved by Council Lewis, seconded by Council Mellon, that council now adjourn to meet again at the call of the chair.
All in motion, those in favor. Opposed, if any, motion carries. Thank you very much.